Well, good evening and welcome to Saginaw City Council Meeting tonight. Tonight we'll start with a prayer and pledge, if you'll please join me. By the way, thank you for this opportunity. We have to go about the business of the city. Be with us as we deliberate, as we talk about the city budget and how it affects our citizens. We ask you to be with us for that. Also, we just want to give special, just a special thanks for being with Councilman Larry Chlorus during his illness and just be with him and give him strength with us. We ask all those things in your name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
And states of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a quick reminder before we do roll call, if you have your phones with you, please make sure you have those turned down so that they don't interfere with our council meeting, please. Madam Clerk, would you begin with roll call?
Thank you. Councilman Fitzpatrick.
Present.
Councilman Tibbs.
Present.
Councilwoman Bench.
Present.
Mayor Protem O'Neill is absent. Councilman Chlorus is excused. Councilwoman Moore is absent. Councilman Walls.
Present.
Councilman Clark.
Here.
And Mayor Browning.
Here.
We have six members present, three absent.
Thank you.
That takes us to announcements, Mayor. I do have a couple.
Okay.
I'd like everyone to remember that the Riverfront Development Commission's annual cleanup day is this Friday, May 15th, beginning at 8:30 a.m. on Ojibwe Island near the docks. Volunteers and donations are welcomed and appreciated. Also to your attention that we do have a revised agenda that has been issued and distributed due to the revisions of the ordinance, which pertain to form and not substance changes. The revised ordinance also has been distributed for consideration. And Mayor, that takes us to personal appearance, which we have done this evening. Therefore, your next order of business is remarks of council.
Okay, Councilman. Remind you that the five minutes and tonight, we would have normally began with Mayor Protem O'Neill, but we'll go right on to Councilwoman Annie Bench.
Thank you, but I have no comment this evening.
Thank you. And Councilman Tibbs?
Thank you, Mayor, but I have no comment.
Okay. And we're just, Councilman Fitzpatrick? Ditto. Okay. And Councilman Clark?
We're gonna get done faster than ever. I repeat the same.
And Councilman Michael Ball?
I don't think we're gonna get done as fast as people would like to, but I'm gonna take the honor of taking everybody else's time for my comments.
You're out of order, but go ahead.
I don't have any comments.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, let's move on.
There we go. We are now at the managers' reports.
Okay. One item that I wanted to mention from last meeting that we didn't really highlight, but the City Hall did receive grant award for the AED unit that we applied for some time ago, and that was in the approval, but I want to let everyone know that that did come about and we're working with Chief Van Leeu to look at how we can mount that at an accessible area where it won't be disturbed normally, so I wanted to just highlight that a little bit. And then, most of the presentations this evening will be from Ms. Yolanda Jones and Matt Lane covering our special revenue funds, enterprise funds, water and sewer operations and maintenance, internal service funds, fiduciaries. And Kim Mason and Phil Carwatt will give some brief comments about some of the projects in water and sewer and right-of-way operations. And Dennis Jordan will have an update on the police pension and current status of the retiree healthcare discussion. And then I have a few comments about some of the OPEB items as well.
As the city manager said, tonight we're gonna go over the rest of the budget. Last meeting, we went over the general fund. Matthew Lane, he will be discussing our special revenue funds, and I will carry us through with the enterprise funds, internal service fund, fiduciary funds. And then Kim Mason and Phil Carwatt will discuss the water and sewer. So at this time, I'm gonna bring Matthew Lane up to discuss special revenue funds.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council. Thank you for having me again. Special revenue funds, as you may all know, they account for the proceeds for specific revenue sources that are legally restricted to expenditures for specific purposes. So we can't just use them for anything. We use them for specific reasons. In fiscal year 2016, special revenue funds will be $18 million, just over $18 million. And that's a 10.61% reduction from the previous fiscal year. And special revenue funds make up just over 16% of the total citywide budget. The first special revenue fund we're going to talk about are the major and local streets funds, which can be found on pages 116 and 132 respectively in your budget document. Major and local streets combined will be $6.2 million for fiscal year 2016. Major streets will be $4.7, local streets will be $1.4 million.
Say that again, or again?
Major streets will be $4.78 million, and local streets will be $1.44 million. Major and local streets funds increase in the number of employees just by .45 full-time equivalents. This is mainly due to 1.3 FTE shift from the rubbish fund with a net increase of .7 FTEs in major streets and a decrease in local streets by .25 FTEs. And as you can see, the total FTEs for both major and local is 18.88 full-time equivalents. As you can see, major and local combined, looks like they've been going up a little bit over the last couple of years after a drop in 2012. In fiscal year 2016, they're sort of level with the previous fiscal year barring any sort of legislation changes. And obviously, Proposal 1 failed at the ballot box last week, so we don't anticipate any additional revenue at this time. Major streets realized a decrease of $167,000 overall. This is due to the reduction in the number of street projects going on this year and operating services, as you can see on the screen, and also a decrease in the transfer to local streets, and that's found in the miscellaneous line there. Local streets actually increases by $151,000, and this is due to some projects in the local streets funds that aren't normally there. 19th Street and LaPierre are budgeted, and the Gabriel Road reconstruction is budgeted as local street projects. Any other projects or you have received a presentation from Mr. Carwatt and Ms. London in the past, and actually I think you have that with you to refer to for the construction projects, and Mr. Carwatt will be talking about some of the projects for water and sewer later, as well as Kim Mason.
You can see it's got the information.
The next special revenue fund we'll talk about is the rubbish collection fund, which can be found on page 145 of your budget document. The rubbish collection fund will be $3.9 million for fiscal year 2016. This is a decrease of .42% from the approved budget levels of the current year. On April 20th, 2015, Mr. Carwatt, the Director of Public Services, completed a review of the rubbish collection fund, and you actually have a presentation in front of you that he gave to council at that time. It should be mentioned that the city continues to evaluate the rubbish collection fund. Additional changes will be realized during the course of the year in 2016, and Mr. Carwatt continuously evaluates rates and services for that fund. To just give you a quick overview of the fund, revenues will decrease a total of $16,000. This is largely due to reduction in household unit charges. This is due to the continual decline in household unit count. Also, there will be a reduction in the amount budgeted for trash removal this year. This is because historical averages have been going down throughout the years. And to offset these reductions, there's a slight increase to the abandoned vehicles and payment in lieu of taxes revenues. The largest change to the expenditure side of the rubbish collection fund is personnel services. Personnel services decreases by $97,000 from the current year. This is due to the reallocation, as I mentioned before, of 1.3 full-time equivalent employees to the major streets fund. To offset the reallocation of those, we have an additional 10% of the deputy chief inspector being moved into the rubbish fund, into the environmental improvement division. Reduction in personnel costs also is related to the re-amortization of our MERS pension obligation. A little bit of an offset to that will be some overtime increases in the composting division, though, so there's a little bit of an offset. Operating services will increase $80,000. This is due to increases to the Mid Michigan Waste Authority rates, printing for tickets in the environmental improvement division, fleet charges, recycling rates from MMWA. There are no monies budgeted for capital outlay in the rubbish collection fund this year. Clean Energy Coalition is found on page 180 of your budget document. The Clean Energy Coalition doesn't change in fiscal year 2016. It receives all of its revenue from a transfer from the general fund of $40,000. And the fund is used to do energy efficiency projects throughout the city, as well as it has, I think, 10% of one of our engineering assistants in it. The next special revenue fund will be the public safety fund. The funds are budgeted in 2016, will be the last year of the current public safety millage. The public safety millage that was renewed recently will start in fiscal year 2017. The information for a public safety fund can be found starting on page 156 of your budget document. The resource allocation for the public safety millage fund will be $2.8 million. This is a reduction of 6.52%. The decrease in revenue is due to a reduction in the assessment of real property values throughout the city, as well as accounting for $45,000 in property tax chargebacks from the county. The total personnel complement will be 32 FTEs for the public safety fund in fiscal year 2016. This is one employee less than the previous year. This employee was reallocated to the general fund. In addition, as the public safety fund was originally set up, we've gone back to a roughly 65-35 split between police and fire. The police complement will be decreased by three full-time employees, and the fire complement will be increased by two. Our next conglomerate of funds in the special revenue area are the public safety grant funds, which will start on page 162 of your budget document. The community policing fund will be $546,000 for fiscal year 2016. This is a $52,000 reduction from the previous fiscal year. The reduction is primarily associated with a decreased allocation coming from the general fund. The police training fund remains the same in fiscal year 2016 as it did in the previous year. The Department of Justice Assistance Grant Fund will remain the same as well. The drug forfeiture fund will decrease by 1.04%. This is due to a decrease in federal and state forfeitures throughout the city. Proceeds aren't coming in as much as they were, and they will be utilizing less in fund reserves. Saginaw TAPs Treatment and Prevention Services will increase slightly by $400 bucks. That's a county grant. Homeland Security Safer will be $0 in fiscal year 2015, as the current grant performance period ends on June 30th of the current fiscal year. As mentioned at the last meeting, the auto theft prevention grant will be zero for 2016. This is due to a reduction in the workload for the employee at that grant. The amount of funding that had been provided from the granting agency just isn't enough. The city has evaluated the program to determine the viability of its operations. In the review, it was determined that grant funds received were not sufficient enough to support the operation. In addition, the need for other type of enforcement has been identified, and so the person in this grant was generally allowed only to work on auto theft cases. So it made economic sense to move that person back to the general fund. Next area we're gonna talk about is Anderson Enrichment Center and the Saginaw Arts and Enrichment Commission. Now, generally, we don't talk too much about these guys, but in the middle of the year in 2015, City Council actually passed separating them into their own funds. For the past 30 or so years, they've been combined and sort of commingled together, but upon conducting research, it was determined that since the Saginaw Arts and Enrichment Commission is a separate entity from the center itself, we've separated them so they're no longer commingling funds. There are two part-time employees allocated to the Anderson Enrichment Center, and there are also two part-time employees allocated to the Saginaw Arts and Enrichment Commission Fund. The center's budget will be $112,000 in fiscal year 2016, and the commission budget will Our next area of interest will be Tifa's, LDAFA's, DDA's, and Brownfield Authorities, which start on page 192 of your budget document. The Commerce Center DDA and the Brownfield Authorities receive their revenue from property taxes, but they have declined because the values in those districts have declined. As you can see, $379 decline in Commerce Center DDA, and just over $1,000 for the Brownfield Authorities. The DDA Downtown Development Authority declines due to the completion of the facade program they had for the last couple of years, and they reduced their use of fund reserves. As you may know, the DDA does not capture property tax revenue at this time because their property value dipped below their starting point, so they no longer capture revenue. The DDA 2011 is new in the fiscal year 2016, and this is due to the new DDA 2011 TIF plan that started capturing. It's just a little bit, it's only $1,200 in fiscal year 2016. Our next fund is the Tar Hardist Hit Fund. This is the Troubled Asset Relief Program. As you may remember, the city received $11.2 million at the end of 2014 to tear down roughly 1,000 houses. The grant actually ends at the end of this fiscal year, but the city was able to get an extension on that, so we have budgeted $31,500 to get us to the end of the new extended Our next area is community development block grants. Community development block grant-related funds will be $3.7 million in the 2016 fiscal year. This is an overall reduction of $378,000. CDBG will decrease overall by 378 or 9.27%, and this is due to reductions in block grant entitlement dollars. CDBG residential and rental loans were combined in fiscal year 2015, and so they are still combined in 2016. Our next area is Celebration Park, which can be found on page 230 of your budget documents. Celebration Park Fund is proposed to be $86,267 for fiscal year 2016. It's roughly 40% reduction from the fiscal year 2015 budget. This is due to the completion of the boulder climbing structure and connector path, which is a grant that we received from the DNR. The work will be finished in the current year. Even though this fund reduced based on the project being finished, it should be noted that personnel costs will increase a little bit, well by 20.6%, and this is based on the state minimum wage actually increasing. A lot of our attendants there were at minimum wage, and we had to increase their hourly rates based on the legislation. And there is $8,000 budgeted for capital outlay, and this is for irrigating part of the park for the next fiscal year. And that is all of the special revenue funds. Ms. Jones is gonna pick up from here and start off with enterprise funds. Thank you.
I'm sorry, you said that was until the next budget cycle? Or is that what?
That actually is extended through October of 2015.
And you also said that there was a decrease in the community policing due to a decrease from funding from the general fund?
Yeah, we actually have lesser senior police officers in that fund, so it was just a decrease of bringing the general fund portion over. The water fund transfer stays the same, and the CDBG allocation increased slightly. So overall, it was a decrease because of the cost of the personnel.
Thank you.
Yes, just to get this out of the way, because I know that it's been said already, but shows the safer grant at zero. Is that because we don't know yet, right?
That is correct. When we were developing the budget, we didn't have the ability to know whether we were gonna get the extension or not, or whether we were gonna get a new grant. Because the budget is a living document, once we hear back on whether we get the extension or the grant, we'll do an adjustment to recognize those monies.
Right, just can't count our chickens before they're...
Correct. It has to be reasonably assured.
Yeah. Thank you.
The administration went up $137,000 trying to figure out why. Did we hire someone, people, or what for?
The administration?
Yeah.
What page do you want?
207, I'm sorry.
207.
Bottom of the page.
65, 10.
Okay.
Okay. 65, 10, okay.
Notice that. This is the budget.
207.
Okay.
So a little bit.
Funding level summary down the bottom.
Right.
It didn't go up, just, I think that's only from a year-to-date figure, so it probably isn't that big of an increase. For the actual...
That's only $14,000.
Yeah, from the budget.
Basically, you have like your active cost of your...
If we have retirees listed in there.
Okay.
If people get their regular, like, step and longevity increases, you could see that there as well.
And what's in McKinley Homeless?
That's our homeless program.
And who gets that money?
Well, it's handled through the CDBG, but it's, I don't know the sub-recipient off the top of my head, but I can get that information for you.
Okay. I was, when I seen McKinley, I was seeing, you know, how did that name get in there too?
Well, that's the name of the program itself. The grant itself was McKinley Home Prevention Program.
All right. Okay, thank you.
And just a reminder, on the CDBG, you've already approved the allocation back in February timeframe, so this is just the second approval, and there will be a third one coming through in June.
How many approvals at the same time?
It's just the way that HUD works.
All right.
If there's no other questions, I can move forward with the...
And good question. Good question, good question. Okay, let's move on. All right.
Okay, so our next area is our enterprise funds, and our enterprise funds account for, it provides services to the general public on a user-charge basis, so this is our business-type activities. I'm not gonna go into a lot of detail because both Ms. Mason and Mr. Carwatt will be coming up here talking about the various projects and purchases that will be coming through the enterprise funds. So when you're looking at the enterprise...
Would you hold on just a second? We'll cut up here.
Sure.
Just a second.
No problem.
Okay, go ahead.
So when you're looking at the enterprise fund, it accounts for 42% of your total citywide budget. The total budget for this fund type equates to 46.78 million, and this represents roughly 58% of your non-general fund spending dollars. So what's new for fiscal year 16 is that we have another enterprise fund, the Boat Launch Fund, that's been added, so it's gonna be boat launch, water, and sewer operation maintenance funds. This addition occurred during the last audit. The auditors evaluated this fund, and it was determined that since this fund is maintained as a public service and it's primarily, the monies you receive is based on a user charge, it would become an enterprise fund, so that's why you're gonna see it as one in the 2016 budget.
Do we know what the funds we're receiving on that? What was the funds we received?
For the boat launch?
Yes.
The boat launch, starting on page 235 to 237...
Yep.
Will be $37,067. That is the same amount that was budgeted in the previous year.
How much revenue do we get from that?
About $37,000.
It's kind of the same then?
Yeah, so whatever you bring in is what you can use.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
All right, thanks.
So basically, that was the boat launch. It's gonna be $37,000 for the year. Our next area will be our sewer operation and maintenance fund. That can be found on page 238 to 253 of your budget document. And what you will see is that this fund will decrease by $735,000 or 2.79% from the approved fiscal year 15 budget. On the revenue side, you're gonna see a reduction in the amount that's appropriated for the retained earnings, and this will be slightly offset by increases to services and sales charges and the grant fund for the stormwater asset management grant. And Ms. Mason had spoken about that at our last council meeting, or Saw Grant. On the expenditure side, you're gonna see that personnel services will decrease $436,000. This is primarily due to the reallocation of two mechanical repair persons back to the motor pool operations. Those two positions, or a portion of these two positions, were shared by the water fund, the sewer fund, and the motor pool fund in the last year's budget. We're also seeing a re-amortization of the MERS pension obligation, as well as a slight reduction in our retiree healthcare costs. Another area that will decrease significantly for the sewer fund is our miscellaneous category, and as I mentioned before, that would be like your debt service, your increase of fund equity, your grants. That will decrease by $1.75 million, and this is due to the reduction in principal and interest payments to our CSO's debt payment. To offset this reduction, you're gonna see increases to our operating services and capital outlay. On the operating services side, the city will realize increases to our professional On the operating services side, the city will realize increases to our professional services and engineering services due to the Stormwater Asset Management Grant. For capital, we just had a slight increase for our capital purchases planned. Just to show you what your personnel will look like after speaking about the reallocation of the mechanical equipment persons, you're going to see that the total complement for fiscal year sixteen will be eighty-five point five FTEs. That represents a decrease of point seven-five. Again, point fifty percent of the mechanical repair persons, there's two of those, will be moved back to the motor pool fund. And then fifty percent of a heavy equipment operator has been reallocated back to the street funds. This will be offset by the addition of point two-five of the Superintendent of Water Treatment and Field Operations. During our mid-year personnel review, we approved this position, the Superintendent of Water Treatment and Field Operations. This individual was, at one point, a hundred percent in the Water Fund. Because he's over the larger area, twenty-five percent of his costs will be allocated to the Sewer Fund.
Question, Consulman Fitzpatrick.
With this title for this...
The superintendent?
Yes.
Are you asking for like the...
The page in the budget.
Okay, the page in the budget, actually, it's, looking at the Sewer Fund, we're going to be on page two thirty-eight to two fifty-three, and in the budget document.
Superintendent, you're going to be on page two forty-nine of the budget document.
Who's that person reporting to? Who's that person reporting to? I didn't see that.
Actually, this person actually reports to both Kim Mason and Phil Carwatt. The person in question is right here, Mr. Paul.
They get it from both sides, in other words. Yeah, okay.
So like, on the maintenance and service side, he reports to Phil. On the water treatment side, he report to Ms. Mason.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? No other questions, we're going to move on to the Water Operation and Maintenance Fund, which is found on page...
Oh, I'm sorry, Consulman Tibbs.
I'm sorry, I was writing down. You said the enterprise fund represent what percentage of the total budget?
About forty-two percent.
Okay, that's what I thought you said. And then you said the percentage of non-general fund?
About fifty-two percent for non-general fund. Okay. No other questions? Water Operation and Maintenance Fund, found on pages two fifty-four to two sixty-eight. The fund will be approximately twenty-one point one-six million dollars for fiscal year sixteen. This is a reduction of one point nine-nine million from fiscal year fifteen. And this reduction is primarily associated to a decrease in the amount of bond proceeds that will be utilized during the fiscal year sixteen budget. On the expenditure side, looking at your Personnel Services, Personnel Services will decrease three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, three seventeen. Again, similar to what's happening over in the sewer side, you're going to see similar activities on the water side. You see the reallocation of a portion of the motor pool or equipment, mechanical equipment repair persons to back to the motor pool. We're also seeing the elimination of a Plant Operator A position that was previously budgeted in the fifteen budget. We put it in the budget, we never filled it, so we're saying we're going to eliminate it, and that's basically what's happening here. You're also seeing the reduction, again, of the Superintendent of Water Treatment and Field Operations. We also see a slight decrease in your MERS costs, as well as retiree healthcare. Operating Services, that will actually decrease, is your largest areas of reduction, by one point one-five million. This is due to the delay in the number of projects that will be completed in two thousand and sixteen. And again, the Directors of Public Services and Water and Wastewater Treatment will discuss those projects in a couple minutes here. Capital Outlay will decrease forty-five point five-four percent, and this reduction is due to the number of repairs and replacements that are going to occur during the year. And again, miscellaneous expenditures, again, will be nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars less, and that's basically a decrease in an installment payment. Reviewing the personnel, again, it will be, total personnel complement for the Water Fund will be sixty-one point eight FTEs. Are there any questions with regards to the Water Fund?
Do people, do they probably have a cross-connection on the fountains, I mean, on the water spigots in the houses?
I will refer that question to the Director of Public Services.
We've got a program in order to be in accordance with the AWWA standards, but we go out and we do investigations on mostly high hazard. That would be more of a low hazard situation. But no, they're not required to have anything on their outside spigots.
I was just curious, because I know it can contaminate the water system, I was just wondering. You know, do they have to have them on the houses? But they just do it on the, where do they have to have them?
Mostly like, high hazard would be medical facilities, or, you know, certain places where there's boilers, and you could have chemicals in the boiler that could then be drawn. If you get a vacuum effect in your main, you know, you'll get a suction effect that can actually suck. You know, like, if you have a sink drain in a house, typically, you know, you're supposed, there's a requirement where you've got to be two diameters higher than the highest level of the sink, or whatever. But there's certain requirements. I can't get into all the particular details, but if it's something you were looking for, I could get that information back.
I'm a pipe fitter, so I know about those things. But what I'm saying, I was wondering, did they have to have those cross-connections on there? I just wanted to know. And they don't have to have them on the spigots on the outside?
No.
That's what you're saying? Okay.
I mean, you're not supposed to have, you know, a garden hose sitting in a tub of antifreeze or anything either, you know. But that's something, you know, you've got to be there to catch it, though, you know.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Phil and I are just going to go over a little more detail as it pertains to some of the projects related to water and sewer operations. As you've already stated, the total budget for sewer operations is twenty-five point five million dollars. And what we did here was, because it's somewhat confusing to people with the split, since we're no longer a public services department where all of the utilities were included, we split it basically in half. We showed here how public services, which is underneath, Phil Carwatt is Director, and Water and Wastewater Service, which is underneath myself, how it's split. Phil has the engineering services, the meter maintenance and service, the maintenance and service, catch basin cleaning, which basically is street sweeping. And then we both kind of handle the debt service. Water and wastewater, I handle the administration budget, Process Control Systems, which is the group that handles the computerized system, the SCADA system at both water and wastewater treatment plants. And they also were involved in the AMR system that was put in, that's still being installed now. And then we have Treatment and Pumping, which are the treatment plants. Remote Facilities on the sewer side is for the retention treatment basins. That's the budget that we use to account for how we support and maintain the retention treatment basins. And then we have the surplus budget, which is for our capital projects greater than twenty-five thousand dollars, how we account for those projects that we're doing, so our major projects. And then we have the Sewer Bond Construction Fund, which basically is, if we're going to be borrowing money in that fiscal year, then we would account for the revenue, I mean, the expense that would be coming in under that Sewer Bond Construction Fund. Okay, for fiscal year sixteen, our vehicle and large equipment purchases add up to one point one million dollars. And the items that we're looking at purchasing, we're looking at a Sewer Vector Truck, which is, a Sewer Vector Truck costs approximately four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to purchase. Two street sweepers. Street sweepers run around one hundred and ninety thousand dollars each, so that'd be a total of three hundred and eighty thousand dollars for street sweepers. A backhoe for the Maintenance and Service Division at a cost of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We'd be splitting that with water and sewer, because they do the underground maintenance for both functions. So that'd be fifty percent of that backhoe. Three dump trucks, we're looking at two ten-yard and one seven-yard dump truck. And once again, that would be another split between water and sewer, so that's why we're only showing fifty percent for sewer. And then we've got five pickup trucks for the various divisions between Maintenance and Service, the Treatment Plants, the Retention Treatment Basins, and then a portion of the engineering, a couple of engineering vehicles, because they provide inspection services on our projects. So it's just a very small portion for their vehicles. And then we also have the automated meter reading infrastructure. This is our third year that we'd be installing more endpoints in the system. It was a five-year program where we're automating all of the reading for your water usage, and that also is how we account for sewer billing as well. And the first two years of the project were funded strictly on the water side. Actually, this is our fourth year, I'm sorry. And then the third year, it was primarily water, and then a small portion of sewer. And then the last two years are all sewer, but it ends up a fifty-fifty split in the end. Yeah.
Question, Kim?
Sure.
Are those all new vehicles we're talking about purchasing this year?
Yes, they are. They're primarily replacing the ages, like nineteen ninety-seven, nineteen ninety-eight vehicles.
So we're replacing a lot. These are not additional...
These are not additional. These are replacements.
These are just replacements, and whatever revenue we get out of what's left is...
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
For instance, the Sewer VAC is twelve years old, the street sweepers are twenty-five years old. So it's stuff that's been well surpassed its useful life, and it's had a lot of mechanical issues in that known. We replaced, we have two street sweepers, or VAC trucks, if you remember, about two years ago, maybe three now. We brought a recommendation forth, we purchased a brand-new one at that time, so...
Okay. So how many total will you have then?
Two.
Two? Okay, all right. Okay.
Okay. And then one part of our budget is the SAW grant, which we discussed at the last meeting, the money that, one point nine million dollars from the grant funds, the one point four million being associated with doing the plan and setting up a future program that will be ongoing, and then sewer cleaning and televising and condition assessment, which is something that we already do as a normal part of our operating budget. We budget up to a half a million dollars annually for sewer cleaning and televising. And so with the SAW, this next fiscal year, we'll be paying for that out of the SAW grant. And then sewer related to road projects. A few meetings ago, Ms. Beth London, and I already pointed out, she handed you, she did a handout that shows all of the road projects that will be in the next fiscal year, and some of those projects also have sewer work attached to them. And then Mr. Carwatt, he handed out a Word document tonight that further shows what those projects are.
You should have a two-page packet in front of you that'll go into detail. On top of Beth London's presentation she gave at the April sixth meeting, breaks down into detail, right? At the top of it, one will say sewer capital, and then the other one will say water capital when we get into water. Kind of give you more detail to the total for the three forty.
Very nice.
And so that added up to three hundred and forty thousand dollars for sewer related to road projects, and that includes some catch basin replacements, catch basin leads, manholes, and sanitary leads, and it varies per project which of those items will be taken care of. Okay. At the water treatment plant and the remote facilities, I want to highlight some of the major projects that we'd be doing in those locations as well. We're going to be replacing starters on our raw switch pumps, which are the original raw switch pumps that were put in in the fifties. So we're starting to have a few problems with the electrical system. We just replaced batteries at the last meeting, but we want to go ahead and do a complete overhaul of those starters. It'll be much cheaper than trying to replace all of those pumps. You'd be looking at maybe two to three hundred thousand dollars a pump if you tried to go through and replace all of them. So we're going to do some rehab work just on the starters, because the pump and pillars and all of that, we've maintained over the years, and they're in very good condition. So we'll just be looking at the electrical system at this time. We're going to be installing standby power at our retention treatment basins. We budgeted a half million dollars for that. Currently, right now, at the last meeting, we bought in a project that Spicer Engineering will be doing. They're doing the feasibility and design for us right now, and so we're looking at actually doing the work in the next fiscal year. And the main reason that we're doing that is because we have to, I'm sorry.
Project you just mentioned, there was another company that's going to do the feasibility study? Green and...
Greeley and Hanson?
Greeley and Hanson.
That was on a different project.
Okay, so how does that interface with what you're projecting here? Will they be sort of working to do some of the research as part of it, or that's separate?
They're two separate projects. I mean, the asset management program itself, of course, will be looking at all the assets, but the specific project for replacing the generate, adding standby power is being handled specifically by Spicer Engineering. And, let's see. And the main reason we're doing that is because it's become more expensive to provide adequate reliability with an outside, third-party utility company. There is a charge. Now, we used to not be charged for having an additional line that was separate from the original line coming in. So in the event, most times, you would not lose both feeds. It's becoming more expensive with those contracts there. And then in the next round, they're going to require us to do like a thirty-year agreement. And so we don't feel comfortable doing that, so we feel that at this time, we should probably move over to standby generation power. And then we have a repair to one of our primary settling tanks. We've noticed a crack in one of the tanks, so we've taken the tank out of service, and we want to have that looked at and see what needs to be done to repair that crack. And then we have some miscellaneous repairs and replacements that are just regular maintenance items that we do. We're looking at, let's say, meters that need to be replaced, flow meters, our chlorine system. We maintain annually, we take parts out of service, and we look at it and do annual replacements. And so it's just regular maintenance items that add up to about two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Okay, moving over to the Water Operations and Maintenance Fund, if there are no questions. Okay, the Water Operations and Maintenance Fund, budget of about twenty-one million. And once again, we have the breakdown between the two areas. And the difference here is that on the water side, we've added cross-connections, which Consulman Ball just asked about. We have an inspector that goes out, he keeps track of the high-low hazards. He's also responsible mainly for residential with irrigation. If you are watering your lawns, you have to have cross-connection control, and so he needs to make sure that those people are getting those devices tested annually when they're taking them on and offline, and making sure that they're complying with all of our cross-connection rules. And then the rest of the breakdown is pretty much the same, except for raw water. Raw water, that shows our raw water treatment, our cost of bringing the raw water from White Stone Point to the treatment plant for water. But basically, it's the same areas as in Sewer Fund. Once again, vehicle and large equipment purchases. We're looking at on the water side, a total of about three hundred thousand, a little bit over. Includes the fifty percent of that backhoe, fifty percent of those three dump trucks. And then two of those pickup trucks are specifically water-related as replacement items, and then a utility cart and a forklift replacement that we're doing also. And then we have our Davis Road Water System Improvements, which we also talked about at the last meeting. which we also talked about at the last meeting with Spicer Engineering. They're doing the feasibility study for that, which is looking at what we need to do to make sure that we have changes made to our raw water transmission line coming in and one of our finished water lines going out to our northern wholesale customers before the Saginaw County Road Commission does a replacement of that road in 2018. Yep, from Tullowassee to Pierce. Some of our major projects that we're going to be doing on the water side also include the lining of a 36-inch water main on Miller Street. And the limits are from the Saginaw River to Woodbridge. So the $345,000 includes the lining and the engineering services related to the design of that project. We also have clean line and replace low-flow water mains. We're budgeting a half a million dollars to look at various areas where we know that we've been having maybe complaints and, and so, and pressure problems. So then we have identified two projects, and specifically, that we'd like to take a look at next fiscal year. Cooper, the limits from Michigan to Bond, and then Madison, the limits of Michigan to Fayette. And then we have the water related to road projects. Once again, that refers back to the projects that Beth London mentioned in her previous presentation. And this includes water services, some water main, and hydrants. And that also varies per project. And Phil Carwatt also handed you another word document that lists all those projects out separately. Okay, at the treatment plant and the various pumping stations throughout our system, we have the Court I discharge and Washington Avenue Transmission Line improvements totaling a little bit over $600,000. So this current fiscal year, we're working on our discharge, original, one of the original discharge, the Washington discharge. We have three in total at the treatment plant. We have the Washington, the Court I, and the Court II. And so the Court I will be the remaining original 1920s-era discharge. And so we want to take a look at that one as well and do some rehab on that because we know that a portion of it is riveted steel. And since we've seen corrosion on our other riveted steel line, we feel it would be prudent to go ahead and take a look at that line as well. The washwater, washwater tower masonry. At the front of the water treatment plant, as you approach it and you see the large tower, behind that tower, there sits a tank, which is what we use to backwash our filters. At the end of the runs, we need to backwash and clean those filters. And so that masonry, the front part of the building, we're starting to see some deterioration. And at those heights, that could be quite dangerous if we have a loose stone falling down at the front entrance of the building. And then we've also seen some deterioration at a couple of our pumping stations where we need to do some masonry work on those buildings as well. And that project is totaling around $800,000 right now to replace, to do the rehabilitation on that stonework at those three buildings. Yes?
This is, I mean, I'm sure it's important, but this is cosmetic in a way.
It's structural as well.
Structural as well.
Yes, it is. And it's basically because of the way the building was designed and the use of the type of mortar that they used at that time. It's allowed quite a bit of moisture to get in, and it's causing deterioration of the brick. And so what we need to do is go in and chip out and replace quite a bit of that mortar. And then at the heights that we're working at, it's a considerable amount of work.
This is a historic edifice?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Isn't there some kind of available grants for repairing historical buildings?
Not really. We've looked into that and we're falling in the same problem that we've had with trying to get funding for City Hall as well.
How are we doing with that?
That's not, that's beyond my scope.
I'm sure we'll be covering that, right?
What's that?
Buildings, you know, the building fund, that sort of thing.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. And then we have two of our high-service pumps. We need to take a look at a couple of the bases of two of our high-service pumps. And we're estimating that the cost to repair those bases will be around $50,000. And then we have our clarified water pressure improvements, which is basically a pressurized manhole that connects various parts of our treatment system at our treatment plant. And so we need to rebuild that entire structure. And that's going to cost around $110,000. Oh, I'm sorry.
Mine actually goes back all the way to the Court I discharge.
Court I, okay.
I keep looking at the number, and you were saying that you want to look at it. I'm assuming that actually is a budget for repairs that, or replacement, not just repairs, but actual replacement.
Right. We need to do more investigation of it, but we also want, once we, whatever we find, we need to have it repaired before the next high-use season comes on in the following fiscal year. So we've put in money to also do the replacement up to a certain lineal feat.
All right. So you've got both the investigation cost and improvement cost?
Yes.
All right. I'm a little, what is a discharge in a water, in the water side? I'm not sure I understand that.
When the water comes into the water, it's pumped in from White Stone Point. And once it reaches the plant, it comes in at our highest elevation. So then the water flows by gravity throughout the treatment system. And then when we, when it finishes through the treatment process and comes back out of our finished water clearwells, we pump it out to the customer. And we have three large discharge lines that we use to accomplish that. And this is one of the three.
That's the discharge of the fresh water?
The drinking water.
To the main distribution?
Right.
To the main distribution, okay. All right. Are the others, are the other two, I mean, have we looked at those already?
We're working on the Washington, which is one of the, there were two originally, and then we added a third. So the Washington and the Court I were the two original lines. We're currently doing rehabilitation work on the Washington.
This is two of them, not just one here?
Oh, this is, this is the Court discharge. And then we have a valve out in the system on the Washington that we noticed as a part of what we're doing now, that we want to add to that work. So that's just a valve, the transmission line work is a valve that we're going to add in place. That will make it easier for us in the future if we need to isolate a line.
Well, the Washington, evident one, is that going to be done in the future? I mean, is that?
Yes.
That'll be like next year's budget presumably, or the following year?
Right. We're hoping to finish it up this fiscal year, and then?
I'm actually referring to the discharge investigation and replacement if need be.
Right. We're hoping to finish that up this current fiscal year by June 30th.
In that, in that amount?
No, that one was, we already bought that to council in the current fiscal year.
Okay, so that's covered, okay.
Okay, so that's already covered.
Gotcha, thank you.
Yeah. Anything else? And then we have our main processor replacement at the water treatment plant. That's a part of our SCADA system, will be around $30,000. And that's it.
Councilman Tibbs?
That's in, currently in the bidding process, I'm assuming?
We've already done the initial investigation, and we're waiting until the next fiscal year to actually do the bidding process on that one.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Sounds like an awful lot of projects are going to be bid out.
Yeah. And this is a slower season for us because we're doing a lot of investigation. And we're looking at 17 and 18 are going to be really big construction years for us. That raw water transmission main project is huge on Davis Road. And so we are trying to get as much investigation done in 16, and then we'll be looking at how much money we need to actually spend in 17 and 18.
Councilman Patrick?
That means the other municipalities and townships, right? Doesn't mean Saginaw.
Oh, no, it includes everybody because it's the raw water line, one of the lines we're looking at is the raw line.
Okay, so there's a, there's a discharge, if you will, from, from there that comes back to the city?
Right.
For our water.
And then the finished water line for all of the northern customers, they're all in the same vicinity.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, bring this back down here. Okay, so our next set of funds that we're going to look at is our internal service funds. And these account for goods and services provided to one department by another on a cost reimbursement basis. The internal service fund represents 6.27% of the total wide city budget. The total budget for this fund type equates to 6.96 million. This is an increase of $220,105 from the previous fiscal year. So beginning with the Public Services Building, which is right across the street. For fiscal year 2016, this is, this fund is projected to receive $473,874 in revenues. This fund generates revenue solely through fees for services, and that's rent. So we have traffic engineering, the director's office, motor pools, they all pay into this fund. And it's charged to the divisions that occupy space in the public build, public works across the street by the City Hall. This fund type, the expenditures are used to maintain the building for its occupancy. Again, for fiscal year 2016, the Public Works Building increases slightly by $367. And again, this can be found on page 269 of the budget. Any questions with regards to the Public Services Building? So the next area that we're looking at is the Department of Technical Services. As the city moves forward with this financial challenges, it's important that we, that our processes are more efficient and effective. Through our technological advancements, we're able, we're better able to be proactive in our response to the city council and the electorate. And this is done through our Department of Technical Services. There are two parts of this department. We have the Geographical Information System side, and we have the Information Management System side. So looking at your Technical Services GIS, which starts on page 274 to 279 of the budget. This fund is projected to receive revenues in the amount of $601,702. And most of this will be utilized in our GIS division, which equates to $521,981. And charges for services to other departments within the city for goods and services rendered. So you're going to see charges in the street funds and the general fund, in water and sewer. And we also receive monies from other governmental entities for services provided to them. And as everyone knows, we're known countywide for our GIS capabilities. Looking at the GIS division, you'll just notice that this division decreases by 1.5%. And this is due to the reamortization of our MURS pension liability. The second division is our call center. The call center division equates to $79,721, which is a decrease. And this decrease is due to a reduction in the need for telephone headsets in the call center. So last year, we bought some headsets. We don't need to buy headsets this year for 16. Transfers to other funds is projected to be zero for fiscal year 16. And they were transferring an allocation over to the Celebration Park Fund that's no longer needed or required. Looking at Technical Services IS, that starts on page 280 to 283. IS fund is generating revenue solely through the fee for services. All city departments and divisions pay for the maintenance and support of their computers through this fund. They also pay for phones and printers. Revenues from these charges will be 1.36 million for fiscal year 16, and this represents a decrease of $5,886 from 15, or fiscal year 15. Expenditures directly related to IS services will be 1.35 million. This is a net reduction of $7,012. And this is due to a reduction in personnel costs based on our pension, the reamortization of our pension costs. The remaining $15,224, this is an allocation that's being transferred over to the Celebration Park Fund. Any questions as it relates to technical services?
Yeah, Councilman Tibbs?
As far as monies received from other municipalities, do you have an idea what percentage of revenues would that consist of?
The Director of Technical Services will answer that question.
I'm not sure the exact percentage, but we have a contract with the Saginaw Area GIS Authority. Roughly, I don't have the figure in front of me, but it's usually around 40-some thousand. But we also do work for, if it's, we do environmental assessments for any kind of grants that come in, where we remove buildings. So we kind of look at historical, what we've done in the past, and kind of look at what we think we're going to get for the coming year.
I guess I was going to ask too, as far as the, I don't know if we even have an official title for it, but the reporting system for issues on non-occupied properties that are given to the property owners? Is that a cost at all?
No, that's no, that's incurred by the Technical Services and GIS Department. And it's our public safety notification system that we set up. And is a service for the landlords and for the citizens of Saginaw.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Ball?
I see the Technical Service Director only count for half of the budget.
He's split between the GIS and the IS fund.
Councilman Clark?
Yeah, thank you. Now, where was I? The 600, let me find this here. The total information services of 1.3, does that include all the payments we make to outside vendors for the maintenance contracts and so forth, or is that in another fund?
As it relates to technical services? Yes, everything that's for technical services is managed in the IS, the IS fund. So what we're paying for BSNA would be seen in the IS fund.
All right, thank you.
The next internal service fund is our radio operation fund, and that can be found on page 284 to 288. The radio operation fund generates revenues through fees charged to user departments for maintaining and replacing radios. Revenues received in this fund will allow for the city to acquire, install, and maintain two-way radio equipment. So for fiscal year 16, the budget, it will be $133,560. This is actually a $14,793 increase from the previous year. This increase is basically due to the increase in cost of maintaining the radios.
Question?
I know it tries to explain it here, but you've got a huge spike in 2013 on those revenues. So why hasn't that continued? Is that?
Well, in 2013, remember, we replaced our system?
Right.
So we disappropriated our fund balance. This is the only fund where we're actually, as an internal service fund, we're adding to fund balance so that we can replace the system within seven years. So you're going to see that spike in '13, and then it's going to drop. And we're going to continue to add to it until we have to replace the radios again.
So the, from '14 to '16 and beyond, it'll probably look a bit more like what we have on the graph between 2005 to 2000, whatever, '10, something like that.
Until Mr. Carwatt looks at replacing radios again.
We have to keep adding up the fund balance so that in seven or eight years, we have to have 1.34 million available to replace all the radios. We used to do the 911 as well, like stuff.
Right.
Public services, water, wastewater, um, all the rest of the city radio.
And you saw when we, um, when we repl- 911 took over, that that revenue was moved back to the general fund back at that point in time?
Right, right. Thank you.
Councilman Clark.
They're all internal radios, I'm assuming, with months staff, but I'm sort of trying to figure out what we're talking about, quantity wise.
There's over 300. I don't know the exact number, but there's mobiles, there's portables, and there's base radios. So, it's for communications, you know?
Right.
So, there's well over 300 radios.
Okay.
Yeah, and I believe each radio, at least the handhelds, are valued somewhere between 1,500 and $2,000 each to replace them.
Just, yeah, I, I just didn't have a handle on that. It's certainly a large number, and that explains the figure. Okay. Thank you. How many was it?
No, we looked at that, and I, I actually put an analysis together for that when we bought the system two or three years ago, so that would be something I could share. But, and it's also a safety issue, because there are times when the cell towers and that go down, and you can still have the radio capability between the two-way trucks. You know, I mean, emergency in order, if Kim has to get ahold of somebody at one of the retention basins, or there's a situation going on where 911 needs some help. It's, it's a lot safer system, the two-way radio system than it is the cell phones.
Okay.
And we looked at the cost. I mean, the monthly fee for service for the radios times 300 and some at $40 a month, 480, $500 a month times three. I mean, it was a lot more money to go over to the cell phones than it would've been to... Because we only provide, the city only provides cell phones to its supervisors and stuff, so we would've had to buy all these cell phones for all of our 300, 400-plus employees. I mean, it was substantially less expensive to go to the two-way radios, stay with the two-way radio system.
Okay.
The next, um, Internal Service Fund is your Motor Pool Operation Fund. This can be found on page 289 to 294. And the Motor Pool, uh, Operation Fund accounts for the acquisition and maintenance of vehicles and other motorized equipment. The only exception to this is the Fire Department. Revenues received in this fund covers the cost of maintenance and replacement of vehicles and other motorized equipment. So, the Motor Pool Fund will increase 189,991, or 11.86% from the previous fiscal year. This increase is largely due to the increase of charge for services from the user departments. The increase is required to cover the cost of the reallocation of two mechanic repair persons from the water and sewer funds. And this basically is truing up the cost, so that we know the actual cost of this operation. Furthermore, in fiscal year 2016, the Motor Pool Operation has been split into two divisions, as you can see from the graph. The Administration Division, which, uh, has 2.5 FTE personnel, um, ha- houses all of the fixed costs. So, you're gonna see, um, your indirect cost allocation, your pension costs. You're gonna see, um, retiree healthcare costs. Versus the Operation Division, which is basically consists of 6.5 FTE per personnel and houses the variable cost of operating the garage. So, basically, if I bring my vehicle in there, how much is it gonna cost me to get it fixed? This is the, um, division that would be charged to. So, overall, the Motor Pool Operation is at 1.79 million for fiscal year '16. And to, just to demonstrate the difference between the two divisions, um, you have personnel complement for, um, since 2012 to through 2016, where you do see that split of the administration. So, again, the administration would consist 50% of your foreman, your skilled clerical, and your sock, uh, sock clerk. And then, again, the 50% on the other side of, in the operations, your foreman as well. Any questions as, as it relates to the Motor Pool?
Clerical person, we have one person in there, and this, they hold salary for the whole year?
Yes.
$16,000 a year?
Well, they're a 28-hour individual.
Do they work 40 hours a week, or they?
Uh, they're a 28-hour individual.
Oh, okay. All right. I would say if they're working 40 hours, they're still qualified for food stamps making $16,000 a year. Wow. Okay. Thank you.
They're part of the new, um, part-time bargaining unit, and they get a 25 cent increase each July 1.
All right.
So, but they don't have benefits that are associated with them. The next, um, Internal Service Fund is your Self-Insurance Fund. And this fund accounts for the payment of insurance premiums and the distribution of insurance costs to other city funds. It also records the insurance claims liabilities. The Self-Insurance Fund for fiscal year '16 is projected to be 1.29 million. This is an increase of a net 20,539. Any questions as it relates to self-insurance? Yes.
Yeah, Councilman Tipton, go ahead.
Um, based, based on claims and judgments, so the activity within the fund, um, we had to increase it because it was trending high. I'll be bringing a budget adjustment at the end of this year because of how it's been going.
So, that's due to things like accidents?
Um, yeah. For, if we use our insurance premium, yes. Mm-hmm. Because we're self-insured, so.
Right. I know that. I mean, I worked for a company that was self-insured too, but I mean, I, a lot of the, you know, the payments that we're making, the increases are due to things like employee accidents, or, you know, with vehicles, that kind of thing, right?
Well, the, if, um, Janet, do you wanna answer this?
This fund handles more of, um, like, your legal cases than that. Your legal fees plus your premiums, which have been increased as well.
Right.
But your, um, incident claims and damaged vehicles, we have our, um, deductible, which covers under that, which is budgeted in another department.
This is another, another question entirely, I guess, but it relates, I think, and that's, what about, I mean, how do we do with, how are we doing with training? With, uh, drivers' training for our employees? And we have a lot of, we got a big fleet. We got a lot of, uh, vehicles out there. I ju- I just wonder, because I know, it's been proven that, uh, safe driving, you know, and driving education really does decrease the number of incidents, so.
You have an accident review committee that examines any, any auto accident that we have in the city. So, um, we do have a process by which we do that, and we're look at, looking at modifying that. But, um, driver education or driver training is something that we can look at. It might be something even that the insurance companies would assist with. So, that's something that we can definitely follow up on.
Thank you.
Other question? Okay.
Okay. The next Internal Service Fund is your Workers' Comp Fund, and that can be found on page 299 to 303. The Workers' Comp, uh, revenues are based on percentage of gross wage for all full-time employees. The city utilizes the median of the industrial rate to determine the percentage to assess, uh, to each employee based on job classification. We also work with Saginaw Bay underwriters to assist us with determining those rates. Revenues and expenditures for this budget will remain the same as in fiscal year, um, '15 at 1.3 million dollars. And again, it's pretty much stayed the same. So, do we have any questions as it relates to Workers' Comp?
Go ahead.
Okay. The last fund type is our fiduciary funds, and it counts for the administration of property or assets that are owned by other entities. So, the city manages it, but it's owned by a different entity. Fiduciary fund accounts for 7.42% of the total citywide budget. Um, the total fiduciary fund is projected to be 8.24 million. This is actually a 53.25% reduction from the previous year. The first, um, fund within the fiduciary funds is our Unfunded Liability Fund, which is found on page 304 to 306 of your budget document. And that will be 401,135, um, for fiscal year '16, and this actually represents a 67% reduction. This decrease reflects a reduced appropriation of fund equity to assist with the payments of retiree healthcare payment for the general fund. So, last year, we repaid the general fund for what they've contributed in. We're not gonna utilize all that in the current year as we go through and close out the year. So, we're just gonna re-appropriate, uh, 401,135 again. You will see these splits between, um, the police, the fire, and the other, uh, general fund operations.
Question? Go ahead. Councilman Clark.
We seem to be having a heck of a roller coaster. Can you explain what that, why we're having that?
It's based on when we bring forward a budget, it's, you know, it's projections, and once we start getting down to the, um, actual costs, they're a little bit less than what we were given as projections, so.
I mean, these are pretty significant swings.
Yeah.
All right.
Go ahead, Councilman Ball. Go ahead.
We owe for unfunded liability is 215 million now?
Um, yeah, the total unfunded liability is between 215, 220 million.
So, how, how are we coming, we're keeping up, are we going up or down with unfunded liability?
Before I start, like, getting into it, I know that, um, Dennis Jordan will be speaking about it later in this presentation, so maybe we can ask him.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. The other fiduciary, um, funds is our Cemetery Endowment Funds. Um, you have Forest Lawn Cemeteries, and you have Oakwood Cemeteries. These, um, account for legally restricted resources. Revenues collected in these funds may, um, be used only for the cemetery care purposes and support of the city's program. 25% of the revenues collected in the general fund are split and recognized in these funds, and this is accordance with the city charter. The endowment funds are projected to stay the same as in, um, 2015, so they're gonna stay the same. Any questions on that one?
I have no issue with the, uh, grass cutting at the cemetery this year, I hope. Uh, do we have enough money in the funds to take care of that, or what?
We're doing the best. We got three, four, five people, and we can season them. We got two to four, so we have to assist and supply. I'm doing the best I can with what we have. What happens around some of these major holidays, just like we have for Mother's Day, is I pour all my resources out for anybody that had a lawnmower to go to cemeteries, when, uh, because we don't have enough. We don't pour enough money to that budget to support it, to what it used to be. I mean, we used to have 12, four, five employees, and we had 12 temporarys, and so, cemeteries that were older, had greater needs, there's capital needs, there's all that. I'm doing the best I can to assure everybody that when they do go out there, you know, I mean, I, I'm not gonna have a manicure every day of the week, but for sure, I'm gonna try to definitely have, have as good a kid for Mother's Day, Memorial Day, you know, the holiday, Father's Day, and all the mother's days. I mean, we don't have the ability to cut it once in this time of year when the grass is growing. It's not just the cutting, it's the weed whacking. We're talking thousands and thousands of headstones, and we need to keep the weeds down and that. We, we're doing the best we can with what we have, so. And I think it looks great for Mother's Day, and I throw a lot of, you know, Thursday, Friday, for the best of what we have. Thirty-year-old equipment.
Okay.
And the three, five, nine people, they're just not gonna maintain. They're actually the foremen and two workers that do all the burials, all the headstone setting. I mean, it's, they go out with 500 feet burial a year, so, you know, one and a half per day to have to flush them out. If they had some stuff with topsoil and steel, and people like that. We use TriCap, TriCom, the, you know, so they give us a tremendous amount for six to eight people, you know, every day of the week, and then there's special groups that extend around and practice out.
Well, I just wanted to know, because the same questions I'm asking you, the same questions they're gonna be asking me. You know, my neighbors gonna knock on my door and ask my, you know, so, we, you just gonna keep on rolling that ball and find it, hopefully, to stop someplace.
I'm trying to give you a $2 million service or a $1 million.
Well, I appreciate that. Good work. You're doing fine. Keep up the good work, man. All right.
Questions, Councilman? You got, uh, go ahead.
I think with last year, uh, we appropriated funds for new equipment for Toros. How many did we appropriate funds? Was it four or five? As a result of this same issue, I do recall that, that we appropriated funds to, to purchase new items.
Yeah, no, we, in the last couple, three years, we've actually bought, I think, 10 to 12 new zero-turn X marks. But unfortunately, because cemeteries is general fund, none of that money, for the most part, was general fund. So, some of it was through the TARP program, because there was some money set aside through that. So, we worked with the land bank to get some lawnmowers, for mostly for the weed abatement program. Uh, we used some streets money, major and local streets, because there are a couple people that are my, my seasonal groundskeepers that are paid out of streets funds to cut the boulevards, um, stuff like that. So, most of the lawnmowers that were purchased were for them programs, not the cemeteries. I mean, fortunately, through purchasing them, we were able to give some 15-year-old John Deers to the cemeteries, but they've got mechanical issues. I mean, it's, uh, um, so, I mean, and then, like I say, though, when it gets this time of year and we need to get them cut, I pool all my resources, and I send everybody I have for a day or two over there to just get them, to get the cemeteries, because we got Forest Lawn, Oakwood, and Brady Hill. I think there's over almost 300 acres worth of cemeteries. It's a lot of grass. Uh, I don't know the exact account, but I, I think there's over 15,000 or 20,000 headstones that have to be weed whacked, you know, every week or every other week. So, I mean, it's, it's a tremendous amount of work to keep them even looking how we have them looking today with the limited resources we have. I mean, it's not easy, believe me. I mean, it's
I understand.
It's a daily, daily struggle.
I may continue. We appreciate that, and I, I think, uh, if I recall, the, the issue that sort of generated the, uh, concern was around Memorial Day. Was it last year or?
Yeah, last year.
Labor Day?
Memorial.
And from there, uh, we, again, appropriated funds to address the, uh, the initial cemetery issue. So, what I'm hearing you say now is that those units were not particularly purchased for the cemetery?
Nope.
Okay.
Councilman Tipton, does that, if you, you had a follow-up?
I know I've asked this, these three times back in the call, but I can't. Guess grasped the, uh, the answer, but, uh, I, I know the city recently increased, maybe three, three, possibly four years ago, increased the, uh, fees for the use of the burial service there. And I guess I was asking, in relationship to other municipalities who provide similar services, I thought that we were on the low end. I mean, that's just my, I, no, we're not. Okay. And I guess maybe I was answering, I was wondering if, um, and was there some other type of, uh, constraint, uh, as far as charter constraint or something to that nature, as far as using?
Not, not for the fees and that, but we do have to stay competitive. And what we did before we proposed them increases is we did a benchmarking of several neighboring cemeteries, and we obviously didn't wanna go above them, because to stay competitive, we didn't wanna lose that service. And we're still seeing the same number of burials, so I don't know exactly, the fees weren't, increases weren't drastically, but we were a little bit low. I mean, we might've went from 950 for an open and close to 1,000 or something like that. But some of the other communities are anywhere between 850 and 1,000 as well. So, we did do benchmarking in that, so we brought to, we brought forward educated, uh, increases in fees, so that, but we have to stay competitive as well.
So, it's basically come down to general funding and having the funds to have the manpower?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman St. Patrick.
Yes, I noticed you, you've got Forest Lawn and, uh, Oakwood here, but, uh, I don't see Brady Hill. It's closed, right? I mean, it's
Yeah, 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 we don't do any more burials. That's just maintaining that.
But we do maintain it.
Yep. Oh, yeah, we still cut, cut the grass and do the weed whacking and all that other stuff.
Was the, uh, I think it was a few years ago, there was, uh, was it vandalism that we had?
To the roof there, where they stole the copper off the
Yeah.
About three years ago now.
Did that ever get solved, resolved?
Uh, I don't think, well, no, I don't know if they found the, the copper, but we did, we took the, the other copper off the other half, and we shingled it because we knew that was gonna be gone next, so, um,
All right.
They got half of the roof, the copper. We got the other half before they could get the rest of it, and then we just shingled it so that we can try to avoid that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmembers, any other questions, please? Go ahead. It's up there. Go ahead.
We're used to tackle this problem with the cemeteries. Has anything developed in, in the last several months, or? I know plenty of other things have taken precedence. I'm just curious if we have been other things have taken precedence, I'm just curious if we have been able to do anything further.
Well, there's, there's a few things that we're doing, and there is some more active management of that cemetery fund that I talked a little bit about last week, so you'll get a resolution, I think, the next council meeting, to allow active management of the endowment fund and some other park funds, it's going to generate a lot more revenue. The city's been very passive with that for a number of years, and we used to have fairly decent interest revenue from CDs and things like that, but now that's pretty much non-existent. I think we used to get revenue somewhere around fifty thousand dollars a year, and now it's probably less than ten. So we're going to change the way we do that, there's been some changes in state law that allow that, and will give us a greater diversification of that portfolio, will probably generate, if the, the market goes well, anywhere from fifty to sixty thousand dollars in additional, in revenue a, a year that can be used for cemetery fund, so that would be something that we could use to buy equipment to maintain it, and then we've got a couple projects in the works for ideas that Phil and I have been talking about with some other people, about how could we improve some of the capital items in the cemeteries, and that's something we'll probably present about in the next six months or so.
I mean, because I had a few thoughts on the idea, our prospect, of what we might go to do, perhaps we could get together, I'd like to do that. Thank you.
Continuing, any other questions?
Just by the time, the last time we talked about cemetery, I was thinking about the decision, and that's the key. Funds stemming around the cemetery, and I'm, and, you know, that was not the intent for the purchase, but that's what I was led to believe, which will, would have addressed that issue that we're dealing with now, so I just would like to have, you know, the intent to be just that, because I'm really surprised by that.
Well, I am, I'm not certain what you're talking about, we didn't, we did not appropriate any items for capital purchase mowers for the cemeteries last year. We may have transferred money to temporary employees last year to help get the cemetery in shape, and that might be what you're referring to, it was a transfer of funds to get people in there to get it in shape, I recall that, but there was, there isn't any money to buy new equipment there because it's general fund, so if any, any kind of appropriation you'd be doing to put money into the cemeteries is going to have to come from another general fund department, basically.
So thank you for that, that information, but as Mr. Carwatt said, we purchased, I thought it was four, he said we purchased ten to twelve, so we did make a purchase of, of equipment.
But not for cemeteries. Those are funds that are not, the streets fund purchases the mowers for the boulevards, that's not something that we can use for cemeteries. Water and Sewer has made purchases of mowers for their property, and the land bank has made purchases of lawnmowers, several, I think, in the last few years, those can only be used for those land bank properties. We can use them on all the land bank properties, but the funding comes from a federal program that allows you to, to maintain the properties on which you demo buildings. Those mowers cannot go directly to cemeteries. What it does help us with is, when the streets department buys new mowers for the boulevards, then you can have a transfer of old equipment that they had to the cemeteries for mowing, so maybe you're replacing a twenty-year mower with a twelve-year-old mower, which is better for the cemeteries in the short term, but eventually you're going to have that problem until we can use some general fund dollars to actually buy the new mowers.
Appreciate that. What I would like to have, Mr. Manager, is a, just a report on how many units are appropriated for the cemetery, and, and also the number of units that could be utilized to support the cemetery, I would like to have that.
Sure. Yep.
That'd be great.
Mr. Carwatt keeps a detailed list of all the equipment we have, so he can give a list of the, all the equipment the cemetery has, the years in service.
I appreciate that info.
And we do have it citywide, because in, in these extreme circumstances, even though they're not purchased for that, the water department does land staff and equipment to the cemeteries to mow it to get in shape, and that's, and that's been happening, I think, for a number of years, because they employ, employ individuals to mow their property, and it's, it's fairly close to the cemetery, so they, they do that as well.
That's fine, so thank you for the report coming. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Any other, any other, Congressman Valls?
You can give equipment, you can give, use equipment to the, to them, but you can't use the new equipment on it? I don't understand that.
Well, because the way that the, the funds are structured, you can dispose of equipment in a number of ways, so basically, if you see a lot of our parks equipment, similar to the cemeteries, parks is a general fund department, and we don't usually buy equipment, so when you see a parks truck, it's usually rusted out, that's a former water truck that they used for most of the useful life, and then they donate that to the park system, which is allowable under, under accounting rules and usually grant guidelines, too, because in lieu of transferring that to the department, you're going to sell it, and you're going to sell it more than likely for salvageable value by the time that that's used up, so you're not going to get much, so it's a better use for the city to transfer that to a department that can't afford it.
Okay.
Yep, but you cannot, you couldn't go ahead and say, oh, I've got streets money here, I'm going to buy a new mower and station it at the cemetery, because then you're using money that's allocated to you from the state of Michigan for streets to, to run a general fund department, that's not allowable.
All right, thank you.
All right, continue on.
So our last fund, fiduciary fund and last fund, is our police and fire pension fund, which is found on pages three thirteen to three eighteen. The total police and fire pension fund will be seven point eight million dollars, this represents eight point five two million dollar reduction, and this decrease is due to the Police and Command Association of Michigan approving the movement of their pensions to the municipal employee retirement system. Dennis Jordan will be providing you with the status update on this movement. Any questions?
I'm just saying to get it.
Okay. So at this point, I can kick this over to City Manager or to, to Dennis? Okay, so Dennis Jordan will be coming forth to give you a status update in police pension and retiree healthcare.
Okay, so this one's done.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
I, I did not put together a slide presentation, I thought I'd kind of walk through the discussion points that I have tonight, if that's all right. No, no, I could have put one together.
Nothing, nothing printed, nothing?
Didn't want to kill, no, didn't want to kill any paper or anything tonight, so, there are trees for paper.
Okay.
The, the purpose of my presentation, basically, is to give you a little bit of an overview, and most of you have been, are very familiar with a lot of the activity that has gone on with the police and fire pension system, keeping in mind, we have two pension systems, one for the non-public safety, and then, of course, the public safety, the fire and police, and the police and fire pension system. My, part of my discussion right now is going to focus on the police and fire pension fund, and what we've been doing about those unfunded liabilities with that. I have a couple representatives from MERS here today, they're not going to speak unless you ask specific questions that I'll direct to them, but I have Amarni Carlson on your left, and Colleen Canal on your, on my right, your right, my left, so they're going to be here if you have any questions. And again, part of the discussion for this right here is because I have two items on the agenda, the, one of them is going to be the adoption, an adoption agreement for MERS, in addition to an administrative service contract, that's one of the items, the other one is going to be the introduction of an ordinance that changes the police and fire pension system, to comply with the direction we're going in. So several years ago, in fact, I remember talking about this probably at least three years ago, maybe four, about doing something different with a police and fire pension system that is managed by a board of trustees, made up of five members, and we talked about moving that and having an outside vendor, MERS, actually, do the administration and the investment management, the management of the investments. We talked about that for several years, we had an actuarial study done, and in addition, we got legal opinions, because after we got the actuarial study and felt it was a good move to, to move the members of retirees and the actives and move those assets to MERS to manage, some of the bargaining unit, or some of the unions of police and fire both questioned whether we could just do that, and when I say that, the police and fire pension was enacted, I guess, as part of a, the city charter, and what the city charter did is basically reduce it down to, is, is an ordinance that is managed by you, the governing body, the council, so in the city charter, you'll see it references the police and fire pension ordinance. So we were considering bringing that to council, and again, the, the members of the bargaining units didn't feel we could do that, we got our own legal opinion, and the pension board got a legal opinion, and with those opinions, one of them, the, the police and fire pension board felt that we needed to collectively bargain to change that as a condition of employment, they felt that it was necessary that we had to bargain with the unions to be able to make this move, and our opinion said otherwise, that we could do it through a city ordinance amendment. So rather than getting into a long-drawn-out labor dispute, we felt we would just negotiate with the unions, the post-police contracts expired last June thirty-first, and so last year, we began the process of bargaining with them. You approved the MERS, or excuse me, the MERS move for the patrol contract back in November, and so now, what I'll, we'll be talking about in, in closed session, we'll be talking about the command contract, but with both of those moving, what we're going to do is move those assets to MERS effective June first. So we've done that, and what it, it's done is it has, if you saw my council communication, the types of savings that we will see is they have demonstrated better returns on investments, lower management fees, in addition to that, the administrative costs that we're doing in-house, we would be outsourcing that, so there would be a savings, and internal savings with that alone, so that's the purpose of the move. With all those types of savings, what it does is it reduces or lowers our annual required contribution that we have to make into those plans every year, and the money that goes into those pension plans, that part of that annual required contribution is the unfunded liability part, and then the normal cost, which are your annual benefit costs, so those are the two things that are going to be reduced by moving there. And we do have both police units there, we're talking to the fire, we have been in dialogue with the fire, I'm optimistic that sometime in the near future, we can come up with some kind of an agreement with all that group. So I'll, I'll leave it open for any specific questions you might have, and that, again, is why the ordinance change is on there, because we want to make sure that we're in compliance with the ordinance, as well as the collective bargaining agreements are pretty much drive the direction of what we're doing with the police and fire pension system with the ordinance, we just want to make sure that's in compliance, and that's why that's there. And then the agreements that you see in the contract, those we have to have with MERS in order for them to administer those funds, and, and basically, we're adopting their, their plan document.
Questions, Councilmembers? You have copies of the revised ordinance here, and the introduction, you have copies of those here, and those will be coming up later in our meeting here, so I was wondering if there was any questions on the move to the MERS? Go ahead.
The MERS, since they manage pensions as far as for the other workers, and, you know, that we have litigation with healthcare for the rest of the employees of the city that are retired, can they do that, too?
They currently do, I mean, MERS currently does the non-public safety employees, we already have a, a system for all the other groups. Is that what you're asking?
Is all the retirees in the same healthcare group right now? I understand that not, am I right or wrong?
Okay, yeah, the retiring, okay, to the retiree healthcare is another, another issue.
Yes, I know, but what I'm asking you is, do MERS, do, do they manage those type of things, too?
No, they do, what they do manage for us is, several years ago, I think it was two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten, we put in a healthcare savings plan, and when we're talking about that unfunded liability, that two hundred and twenty-two million dollars, that was one of the things that we did, is we put in a healthcare savings plan, so anyone hired after two thousand and nine is no longer eligible for retiree healthcare, so we're putting every month, we're like a defined contribution, 401A or 401K plan, we're putting some money aside for them, and they're putting some money into that plan, and that's being managed by MERS, MERS is handling that piece of it.
I was just wondering, maybe we can get a legal opinion to give to the people that already retired, to let them know that if they did do something like that, it'd be a save to the city, you know, that we would have the money there for them when they did need it, you know, so I was wondering.
Yeah, now, one of the things I was, you know, if you don't have any question about that, the pension, I'll talk about the retiree healthcare right now, that two hundred and twenty-two million dollars unfunded, keep in mind, with the retire, with the healthcare, so I'm switching gears here to the healthcare, because that was part of it, unless somebody had some other questions.
Go ahead, Congressman St. Patrick.
I do have a question on MERS.
And that's, it's just kind of a statement, too, because we have had a lot of this explained to us in, in special meetings, and in the, the strategic planning, that sort of thing, the move to MERS, but the general public has not typically, and I think we're on TV, are we?
Yes, we are.
Is there a ten-minute discussion or a ten-minute presentation that can be given to show what we're getting by going to MERS for the police and fire pension funds?
Absolutely. We, we've done, we're working on some, and Tim is going to give some, an overview as far as what we're doing with that other unfunded liability with just the MERS. Now, eventually, it's going to, they're in different divisions, the police and fire will have their own division at MERS, but we have five divisions in MERS right now, Your Ask Me Group, SEIU, non-union, there's two other groups in there as well, but...
No, I know that, but, but the big, the big question usually, and the biggest discussion has gone on between, with the police and the fire.
Correct, recently, yes.
That's, yes, right, and, and that is what the ordinance, the revised ordinance has to do with, which we have to vote on tonight, so I just was wondering whether or not, for the sake of the public, there's some, some things that could be highlighted or talked about either by yourself or the MERS representatives here.
I...
Changing from the police and fire pension plan to the MERS does not affect benefits at all, I think that's one of the key points, it's merely the administration of the, of the plan.
Right.
So what it does for the city is provides the administration of the plan, so that'll relieve employees in Dennis's office from working on it, which is very beneficial, because there's a great deal of, well, it relieves for the police, so we'll still have to service the fire portion, but there's one employee that does that, so you're always, if you have one employee doing that, you're always going to have an issue of the employee leaving, and how do you replace that, and how do you continue with the historical knowledge, so moving the plan to MERS reduces that, and then, as Dennis mentioned, the MERS program manages funds for hundreds of municipalities in the state of Michigan, so you're getting admin- So you're getting administration that is much more experienced than, than a board can be because they have that ability and they have a professional manager that they employ. So you get a little bit of a different investment analysis and you also get an aggregate of the funds. So typically, MERS will give you a better rate of return than a pension board for one reason, because of the size of the funds. If you're familiar with investing, the more funds you have, the more opportunity that you have to invest because a lot of the IPOs and things like that will not take it unless it's of a certain level. So they have a pretty diverse portfolio at MERS and more so than what we could have. So that's going to increase over your long-term, the return on the fund, always depending upon what the market can do for you. So you have that ability going to MERS and that can build over the years as well. So that's another large benefit. In my opinion, the police and fire pension board has somewhat struggled with disability pensions and we have in, I believe in the ordinance, it states that you can reevaluate and do a number of things like that that the board does not do at this time. We look, we started to do it a few years ago. It became very convoluted and difficult to do. So I don't believe we've done any reevaluation of members on disability for at least two or three years. That's something that MERS will likely do on a continuous basis because it's, again, they have the infrastructure there to do that. So in my opinion, you get a much more professional administration of the plan, you get a better rate of return, and you also get to move the payroll offsite. That's a third leg here. We process payroll for all of, all of the retirees in that fund as well as our actives. I believe police retirees, I mean, if you include fire, I believe it's somewhere around 300, 400 we're processing.
A little over 400.
So that's like a second payroll for fiscal services. So part of that's going to be reduced as well. I think those are some of the key bullet points you get with the movement to MERS.
Right. Could we also say, could it also be said that in addition to saving on time, money, energy and effort for the city staff, there is no downside for police and fire?
The one change that the retirees see is they'll get one paycheck a month instead of two, which is fairly common with pension funds to receive one check a month. We process it now as the fiscal service process is that we do it, we run the payroll with our active employees. So that's the change they'll see. Other than that, you won't see any type of benefit change. But what you will see even on the pension side is you will get probably more statements. You have access to the MERS online. So if you want to use it, if you're getting a pension, you're likely getting the same amount each month unless you have the cost of living adjustment. But yeah, that, basically, that's true.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Did you have some? Go ahead, you worked there. Yeah, let me put him.
Thank you, Councilman Fitzpatrick, because I agree with your position in terms of, thank you, Mr. Manager, for giving that overview. I think it's important, and we all agree that MERS was the right thing to do just based on the dollars and cents. But I think it's extremely important when we have information that being presented that it is in some type of order, pros and cons, benefits, advantages, disadvantages, not only for us but for the public. Okay? This is a huge transfer, a huge transition. So in the future, I would expect to have that information that you just kind of articulated, you know, which goes to your point. You know, it's good to summarize, but this is a huge issue. One of the largest issues we've undertaken in recent years. Okay? All right. So I want to do service as my colleagues mentioned about other things being questioned. People ask us, I know they ask me about this all the time, about the funding liabilities, the pension, the health benefits. I mean, I give them as general information as I can because I'm not an expert on this. You are an expert, okay? We are only as good as the information we get in terms of from our experts unless we do our own research, which most of us do as well. Okay? So just accept this as that. This is important information that should have been outlined in detail in terms of the benefits, the pros and the cons, you know, even some of the support, both police and fire. You make reference to that, well, we work on the fire, they may come on a little later, et cetera. Okay? So I just wanted to make that point.
Previously, and what we can do is bring that back next week and distribute it and maybe hit some of those points.
That'd be great.
Yeah. I think it was a meeting here even, not strategic planning, that we had outlined. But we'll bring it back again.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Public's point of view or perspective, there's a little bit of backstory or history that we need to mention. And that's that the police and fire pension system originated in a time when there were not normally pension systems. Goes back to the charter of the city of Saginaw many decades ago. And the reason we have MERS and all the others, you, with the other unions, is because over time, as the unions developed, they negotiated for the benefit of MERS pension system. But we were sort of stuck with the charter and ordinance requirement of maintaining a police and fire pension system ourselves. And we got left behind a little bit for police and fire with the fact that MERS developed its own expertise. And the other unions began getting the benefit of that expertise and the city got that benefit from reduced costs. So that's where you began coming from when you started looking at, can we transition police and fire to MERS away from essentially an inefficient system where we had a board that really wasn't a professional board for managing a pension system? So going to a MERS system that is a professional system, a professional organization designed to handle pension systems made sense. And we're now looking at the benefit of that. And I guess that historical perspective is what I see as something the public isn't aware of. So it needs to be aware that we're actually sort of catching up with the other unions and what the benefits they have with the police and fire, with whatever transitions we make currently with the command, police, command and police rank and file unions. They're now getting that benefit and hopefully we'll do that with the fire. But that's yet to be determined with negotiations. But I see it as catching up to the benefits that other unions enjoy right now, quite frankly, with the pension system.
And keep in mind, the retirees have all been obviously notified, we've had meetings, communications gone out, and I really haven't had that much. I held three meetings and I think there was one other ones that Colleen attended at the FOP hall, but we had three of them here at City Hall and the numbers, because I think the letter and the communication went out to those 400 that they were, we had small numbers coming in for the question and answer, so.
Well, you could talk to about the MERS move for C O M and P O M is Chief Ruth because he's been on the police and fire pension board for 18 years, 19 years, and he had to be convinced of the move. And now he's helped us talk to the police retirees and met with, with Colleen, with those retirees. So, and he was, was not in favor of it up until probably maybe a year and a half or so ago. So if you get a chance to talk to him about it, he's, he's a good one to discuss it with and upon what Councilman Clock stated, with the difference in the administration, in my view, even if it were savings neutral, I think it's a good move just because of the fact that it takes that burden off, off from city administration and the pension board.
Go ahead, Councilman Tim.
From my understanding, as well as Councilman Clock stated, and I guess just some affirmation, is that I don't want to use the word expecting, but I guess we have a better chance of gaining from market performance when we have those who are professionally managing funds in the, in the stock market per se, rather than someone like you or I maybe managing. Is that a fair assessment?
Yes. There are over $8 billion, $9 billion that they have to work with. Our police and pension fund, police and fire pension fund is working with just a little over $1 million. So obviously a large, larger number of money. Again, those, the better management fees that they want to work in with the managers, they're able to attain, attain that. And that's what they do, I mean, that's what they do every day. And, you know, I'm not to take anything against any of the board members, that's not what they do every day. So you've got people that that's what they manage, they manage those monies, they manage those plans, they have all the resources. They have the medical to do the medical evaluation, they have the legal counsel, the people that change the plan document. And again, the administration, the cutting the checks, the answering the questions, all that. They'll get one phone call and they'll, they'll have a, an organization, that's all that they do. So, yes.
Go ahead, Councilman. Mayor, put him.
Manager to Mr. Jordan, is there any additional information that the MERS representative could insert in terms of some of the things that we've been, you know, pulling out in terms of the benefits and is, Mr. Manager, is that something that, just for the sake of the knowledge of the public?
Sure. If you want.
I mean, I think that, you know, he did an exceptional job, you know, explaining kind of all of the things that we...
I don't mean to, yeah, let's get there to the mic so we have it up there. Thank you.
A little shorter than Dennis. Yolanda over there.
You're doing okay right now.
Yeah, I think the city manager did an exceptional job, you know, of explaining kind of the pros and cons and all the things that we have been talking about in several of the meetings. I mean, I would say, you know, I think it was a couple of years ago that we really did a full-blown presentation to city council, but I know we've done presentations to, you know, large groups looking at the investment returns over a historical period of time. You know, as Mr. Jordan mentioned, this has been something that's been going on for probably at least four years, I think, thinking back to the amount of time. So, you know, just looking at some of the detailed information that I have over history, to give you kind of an example, we did an investment comparison over a 10-year period of time back in 2002 when you were first starting to look at these things. And the MERS investments outperformed the city of Saginaw police and fire plan nine out of those 10 years. So we didn't update that in the last couple of years, but, you know, we've been looking at, you know, all of those things on, on an ongoing basis and looking at the valuations and looking at the services that MERS can provide for Saginaw and, and made those, you know, the, had several meetings with the pension board to answer all of their questions and concerns about what that means for their actives and for their retirees. As Mr. Jordan mentioned, I attended a meeting of just the union representatives, there were probably about 60 to 70 retirees that came to that meeting in the FOP hall that just had a bunch of questions. I was there for about an hour and it was really just a question and answer period in order to get all of their concerns out on the table. And, and after I left, they, they all said, yeah, you know what, we're pretty much good. At the first retiring meeting that we had here, we had about 15 people and then we pretty much had no one show up to the next two. So, you know, I definitely think that we've done a very good job of communicating for sure with all of the involved parties and the board and, you know, would be happy to provide anything else that, that you need. But I can definitely say that we have, we have looked at this from every possible angle.
Councilman Fitzpatrick?
Yes. You know, one of the things that happens, you know, every couple of years, there's a turnover on city councils. So when you say you, you brought up something four years ago, there's a number of council folk here that weren't here four years ago.
Yes.
So that's, that's why we, you know, some of us say, let's hear it again.
Sure.
You know?
Absolutely.
And I appreciate, I appreciate what you've, you know, you've come across very professionally and I'm glad that you met with our retirees. That means a lot.
Absolutely.
To us.
Yes.
Because council folk here, we hear a lot from retirees.
I'm sure.
City retirees. And...
We do too.
We want to, and we want to be fair with them and we want to, you know, we, we think a lot about our police and fire.
Yes.
Departments. It's, the fire department's one of the oldest in Michigan. So, I mean, you know, it's, and the police department's old too. So, I mean, it's, it's, you know, it means a lot. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Go ahead.
If we had, if we would have made that transition, I mean, just estimating the, the revenue just would have yielded how much?
So, so the numbers that we provided back to this group, and I, I don't remember if you can help who all was making up that group, but we had like, what, 30 people that attended that Saturday session where we went over this a few years ago? So the numbers, again, this was back in 2002, but the difference in the over amount, overall amount of pension funds that would have been there, we estimated to be about $40 million because the, the annualized return for the MERS plan was 6.49% over that entire time period, whereas for the police and fire pension, it was 4.81.
Forty million.
So again, we didn't extrapolate that out for the last couple of years, but I think it gives you a pretty good history. I mean...
We had that meeting of the strategic planning of 2012, but we had gone back.
I remember that.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Forty million.
If there's no other questions on that, I just wanted to give you a brief overview as far as the retiree health. As you know, in 2013, the city had set up plans for all the retirees to move them to the same plan that the active employees were on. The, they, a group was formed, they put in a temporary restraining order and it later become an injunction that said we couldn't change those. Anyhow, so the point I'm making is that we've been in negotiations with that group. And just, just so you know, we've been in negotiation with that group and as some, hopefully in the near future, we're going to be able to come up with some agreement that we can all live with that will produce future savings.
I don't think we, we're, 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 it's inactive litigation, so we can sort of discuss it in a closed session. I think Dennis just wanted to provide an update. We do get lots of questions from Council, I believe we should. I think we just want to provide a summary with regard to the budget and whatnot with that question coming up.
Yes. Yep, that's right. And so the budget is prepared as is. We're not counting on any savings from that, that issue at this time.
So healthcare questions, we should wait till a closed session because that is a litigation?
Not on tonight's closed session. We can, tonight's closed session is for collective bargaining purposes, but if you do have questions on the litigation that is pending, we can, you can certainly submit those to the city manager and we can arrange for us to get you that information, either through a closed session or written correspondence.
All right. Okay. Took care of that discussion. We're done. Okay, go ahead. Ask some questions.
I'm saying it didn't necessarily take care of the situation, but we can wait till later.
Well, I'm just saying.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
We're done. And Council involves it. Always a pleasure to have you refresh me and where we're at. So I appreciate that. So thank you. Okay, Mr. Manager?
Two issues that I'm going to comment about before we move on in the agenda. And one is our, our current MERS liabilities and those, as they continue to go across the year, as you all know, they increase annually. So this is something we've talked a lot about too, and what, what can we do for that? The city of Saginaw cannot bond for those, which is what some other communities have done. We cannot bond for that or retiree health because of our bond rating. State law that allowed for that is, is very specific that you have to have a certain high enough bond rating. enough bond rating, which is somewhat counterproductive, I think, because if you have a high bond rating, you're probably not in a position where it hurts you that much each year. But anyway, the mayor and I, I had mentioned this before, went to a meeting with the MML and state treasury some time ago, and the topic of the meeting was pension and healthcare retiree obligations, and what could the state do, what are some options for the state? I also recently had contact from the, a public policy institute in Michigan asking public officials, what are some options would you be interested in? So it is something that a number of communities are looking at, and the state is looking at for other options, but for us at this time, with our, our current MERS liability, which is SEIU, AFSMI, and non-union personnel, that's a hit to the general fund and water and sewer and streets and all those funds that Yolanda just talked about. And as you go through time, you look at, the actuaries look at different factors, so in this particular round this year, we looked at a load factor based on a lot of the benefits that in, in our contracts that have always been there, however, there's some, it's having a different impact now than it had in the past, so that had a, a pretty significant impact on our cost increases. So we had MERS come in, and we talked about that, and, and some of the options that we had there. So we looked at three options that they provided us, and one of them, and we did talk about this at one time too, similar to refinancing a mortgage, the term on the mortgage, so in this particular budget, we chose what does an option be, which is an 11-year amortization period, so that lengthens our term of payback by about five years, but it also keeps, this year keeps our, our MERS payment fairly level. Had we not made any changes, we would have been looking at a pretty substantial increase this year that would have, would have been pretty dramatic effect on the general fund and, and water and sewer and streets all across the fund, so it's incumbent upon us to come up with a way to address that issue. So that's what we did, and this is something that is, is an option under MERS. Now, there's a third option that we will be looking at throughout the fiscal year that I think is going to provide quite a bit more relief and the ability for the city to control those costs a little bit more, at least control the annual required contribution, the level at which we do that. But it's something that we're going to have to work out with SEIU and AFSMI for the most part, and their contracts come up next year. My thought is, we will probably begin talking about this option with them fairly, fairly soon after the start of the fiscal year, that, so that we can at least have that part hammered out by the start of the new year. And that, that I think will have a significant impact and give us more options when we're doing the budget in the future. So that's one thing I wanted to update you on, and you've heard Ms. Jones and Mr. Lane say a few times in the budget, well, this is because of reamortization, and that's, that's what it relates to. And if you remember, that was in our strategic plan in session a few times as well, at the time, it wasn't something we considered, now it's something I think we have to do. And the second point that I wanted to talk about, and we had this presentation last year as well, and I know, I know, so now, I think everyone on council now has heard of the AXA plans that we've had. We have two, two plans with AXA, I guess I'll, I'll say plans at this time, but we have an investment account with AXA that is, is managed by them and is made up of mutual funds, and that's to help with the OPEB costs that we have for retiree healthcare. We also have life insurance policies that has been in there, and we had a representative from AXA come, I believe it was about last July, I'll be very frank and say that we haven't gotten what we had expected to get as it relates to that plan on a timely basis. And I think that was one of the things that a few council members said, you expected to see things coming back from AXA, and we've gotten some things back, but it hasn't necessarily been what we've looked at, and as we prepare this budget this year, again, we realize we cannot put funding into the life insurance portion of that policy, plan. So with the budget, I think the best option is to take the cash value from those plans and move it to the AXA investment portion. The problem that we have if we don't put money into paying for those policies, and they are very expensive policies, is that the policy cannibalizes the cash value in it, because this is whole life. So each policy at this point that is still active has designated cash value. The last update that we had was from last year from AXA, and at that time, there was about $450,000 in cash value in those policies. Absent of paying premiums, which we don't have allocated in the budget, and we haven't had allocated in the budget for, I believe, at least five years, those policies will use the cash value as payment, until the cash value is gone, and at which time the policy is then canceled. We have had several policies canceled because it's eating up the cash value, so my thought is, we need to take the cash value and put it in the investment part where we can get return. I think that makes the most sense for the city at this time. If we, if we had a lot of money to keep paying the, the premiums, it's an interesting program, and, and you might see value there in the next probably 20 years, but then you're talking about paying, paying premiums for, for 20 years. At this point, I, I would recommend leaving the cash in the AXA investment policy, but we really need to get the type of service that I think would be necessary, will have probably over $1 million in that investment account, so I think that merits quite a bit of service, and I think we need to reevaluate what funds are in and get a recommendation for them that could show us the best return. Absent of that, maybe it's time in the next year where we do get some other options and have some other investment groups present to council and say, hey, here's an option, which is what I recently did with cemetery endowment with First Merit, what kind of other proposals could we get? So at this point, I think we, we take the cash value and, and cut our losses at this time, keep it in AXA Investment Management, and then over the next year, try to work with AXA to say, what's the best funds that we can be in to generate income for us? So those are the two items that I was going to, to talk about. Is there, are there any questions about those?
Go ahead, Councilman.
Remind me again, which insurance policies are these for, the past employees or current?
Combination. It was probably 2000, probably some of the people that have been in council, I think Mayor Protem was about 2003, '04, somewhere in that time. The city council had a presentation about putting, similar to key man life policies on a number of employees, they're all supervisory employees with the city, department heads, AFSMI members, chiefs, so some of them are current employees, some of them have long since retired. I believe at the time when it was established, we had somewhere around 50 to 60 policies, and that number has dwindled quite a bit now.
This, would the policy to have these policies of insurance be terminated? Is that what you're talking about doing?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yep, if you cashed in the cash value, those policies would be terminated.
All right, so there would be no more protection insurance-wise? That's the, that's, that's what your proposal is?
Yes, there wouldn't, the insurance proceeds come back to the city.
For the city?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, yep.
So.
So you're looking at, what you're looking at is.
We're both the owner and the beneficiary.
Correct.
Okay.
So if you don't continue to, to provide, pay for the policies, pay the premiums, then it's going to continue to pay out of the $450,000.
Right.
So eventually, they'll be gone anyway.
I just wanted to be sure that I understood which policies we're talking about, and having those answers makes sense to me.
Yep, yep, they, they have no impact on the actual employee themselves, it doesn't have anything to do with their benefits.
How many of those have we collected up so far, two or three?
I believe two.
Did, did that amount make up for the amount of funds that we put in it all to the total?
I don't think so. I think in the beginning, it's been a long time, so I don't know if Mayor Protem remembers, but the initial investment for that was somewhere around $800,000 at that time, and from the two, I think we've gotten three to four. But again, you're, you're almost, I mean, you're gambling to, to keep them, and that's something we talked with AXA about, are there certain ones that would, would be worthwhile keeping, but you really can't, you really can't say by picking and choosing which ones would be worth, worth keeping, and obviously, the nature of insurance, the ones on the older employees are, are far more expensive, the, the insurance cost is far more expensive than on the younger employees.
Good. Can this be something you bring back to us then, when we make that change, or what?
Actually, I was, I wanted to let council know about it, our attorney says that we can make that change as part of the financial management of those policies, but I wanted to bring it to you to get, get your input and let you know that was what I intended to do.
Oh, okay, okay, go ahead, just go ahead.
Mr. Manager, I thought we'd voted on that, that was a council approval, if I recall.
Yes, to do the, the entire plan with AXA, and I, our city attorney looked at that, it's been probably a year now since last year when we looked at that, but the opinion from the attorney was that you can move, you have to keep it with AXA, you have to keep the plan with AXA, but you don't necessarily have to keep the insurance policies if you can't pay for them.
So we're not terminating AXA?
No.
We're just moving the 450, 425 over to the investment arm?
Correct.
And we'll maintain so.
To terminate with AXA, that's something that the council would have to decide. So if we were going to do, if we wanted to look at that, and I think, I think it's something we should do in the next year, and of course, feel free to, to let me know throughout the time, but if we want to look at, there are a number of things that you could do with it, you can keep it with AXA, which we'll do for the time, time being, but if council so chose, you could move it to another banking institution or another investment institution. MERS has, also has a program that they have an OPEB fund, so there are a number of things you can do with it, and we can bring those back to you, and that would be something that we would need council to make a decision on, if you moved away from AXA or, or not. So at this point, it's mainly administrative move.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Just briefly, Mr. Mayor, that, my opinion.
Was that, number one, it's not an expenditure. In, in 2003 or '04, whenever you, excuse me, made that decision, that was an expenditure of, of money, so we would have come to you. This is very much akin to what city manager and his staff do on a continual basis, which is move money, investments, and whatnot, so, but obviously, it was a good idea to tell you what's going on with it.
Yeah, that's good, thank you.
No questions?
Okay. Presentations for this evening.
And Mayor, with that, we are now at the consent agenda.
Okay, Mayor announces that the revised agenda has been available at City Hall and on the city website, and on SGTB, channel 191. And I believe there's only one, so need a motion to adopt the consent agenda, leaving room for the exception.
So who?
The exception.
So who?
All in favor? Okay, is there any exceptions? Be and none? Be and none, all in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
This is approved, yes. Next item is introduction of ordinances. We do have a revised ordinance that's been placed in front of you.
Do we have, do we have reports from boards of commissions?
Did not have any appointments or any, did you want to ask for reports?
Does any, any, is there any reports from any boards or commissions? Okay, good, now we're there, good, thank you. I'm sorry.
Introduction of ordinances, again, the revised ordinances in front of you. It is to amend Chapter 16 titled Police Officers and Firefighters Retirement System. The specific sections are titled Retirement System Continued, Board of Trustees, and Management of Funds.
And need a motion to introduce.
So who?
It's been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Be and none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, and that ordinance will be laid over according to the charter provision.
Mayor, you are now at motions and miscellaneous business. We do have one consideration of motion to go into a closed session under MCL 15.268, section C, for a strategy session connected with the negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement.
And Madam Clerk, would you conduct a roll call vote for us, please?
I will.
Oh, I'm sorry, we need a motion to, do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Or.
We have motion and support. Roll call, please.
Councilman, Councilwoman Moore is absent. Councilman Balls?
Yes.
Councilman Clock?
Yes.
Councilman Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Councilman Tibbs?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bench?
Yes.
Mayor Protem O'Neil?
Yes.
And Mayor Browning?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes and two absent.